Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. This is the 27th day of September 2021. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Papas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, we're excited to have you guys joining us tonight, whether you are here in person or joining us online. We have a great meeting in store for you. We will be recognizing some principals later in our meeting, and that's always exciting for us. These are some of the people that we depend on the most for the creation of culture in our schools and in our district, and so we're excited to have the principals with us tonight. As a board, we got to do something exciting last week, and we got to go to a beam-topping ceremony at Chapelo Arts Magnet School, and that is the third beam-topping, actually, that we have done, and we have a fourth scheduled. So what's exciting about that is our construction projects that were part of the bond that was passed in 2019. They are proceeding on schedule. They are on budget, and it is exciting to watch these buildings go up and to think about what our children will get to experience, well, with Krista McAuliffe in just a few short months, but with Greeley West and Chapelo and our new Twinton School for Pre-Engineering, those open all in the fall. And so that was an especially exciting ceremony for me, just as a parent who's been at Chapelo for 13 years and who has put up chairs, or rather, taken down chairs after every concert. I've done that for 13 years, so that's probably over 100 concerts that we've taken every time taken down chairs. And what that means is that next year, not just that we don't have to take down chairs, but that our kids will actually have a performing space, and that means that they'll actually get to use the gym for what a gym was intended to do and have an athletic space in those cold winter months. And so we are so excited about what is occurring in Greeley-Evan School District 6 around those bond projects. Just one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, and I was trying to think if there were any words I say more often in our board meetings than "Ms. Crane." I've already said at least once, "Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us? Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us?" And Ms. Crane has been our Board Secretary for as long as I've been on the board, and I don't even know how many years exactly, five years that you've been here. She has gotten a promotion in our district, and so we're excited that she'll actually even be staying in this building and working in HR. But this is her last meeting where we will say, "Ms. Crane," and refer to you to call the role or to do anything else for us. And you have been extraordinary in your role as a Board Secretary, both in the way that you keep us organized, the way that you have updated our policies, that huge project that you've primarily taken responsibility for over the last few years. And so we are excited for you and sad for us, and also excited to welcome Ms. Amy Lemon to be our new Board Secretary. And so next time you tune in in two weeks, we will say, "Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?" Anyway, thank you for everything you have done and for being such a critical part of our Board of Education.
Thank you.
We are now to our public participation regarding our agenda items, and Ms. Crane, I don't think we have anybody sign up to speak at this portion of the meeting, do we?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, moving right along, we're to our work session report. And Ms. Crane, will you read our work session report for us, please?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall led the board in a discussion regarding Casby resolutions. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I will give the microphone to you.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I echo your thanks and appreciation of Ms. Christina Crane, our executive assistant. She will be greatly missed, and I feel so fortunate to have Amy joining us. Amy is a Greeley native and lives here in the community, and actually, I have stolen her away from the Eaton School District. So the superintendent over in Eaton, Jay Tapia, he is still speaking to me, but he says, "Whatever you do, do not take her husband," because he also works in the school district over in Eaton. But we will miss Christina greatly, but really glad for her and her promotion and the opportunity for her to stay here in the district office and work in our Human Resources Department as a director. I feel like a proud mama. I've worked with Christina for over a decade, and to see her and the way she's developed, it's just really remarkable. Congratulations. So I've been out. You know, the good thing about some of the lifted restrictions with COVID is organizations are coming back together in person and are allowing for public presenters. And so I've been out now at several opportunities in the community where I get to tell the district's story, and Teresa has joined me in some of those, but we're scheduled out for some additional presentations. But these are opportunities for us to go in and really share the strategic plan brochure and talk about how the strategic plan was developed. And oftentimes, there is someone in the room, at least one, if not two this morning, there were two people in the room, who actually participated in one of our feedback sessions in helping to develop that strategic plan. So we're sharing that as we go out, and then we're also talking a little bit about the report to the community and making sure if people didn't have that in their mail, that they leave with one, that booklet tells a really good story of the district over the last year and a half or so, really. And then we're sharing that video that is the update of the Mill levy override and the bond, and then giving folks an opportunity to ask questions and share feedback. The thing I most want you to know, other than I'm on the speaker circuit again, is I want you to know how much tremendous support and compassion we are enjoying out there in the community. Everywhere I have been, and Teresa, people come up to us afterwards, or even in the larger group, and thank us. They thank the school board, and they thank our staff and our teachers and our administrators for the hard work that has gone on in this system here for the last 16 months. You know, we just enjoy tremendous support, and compassion is important to say, because there is a compassion and empathy for how complex this work is and how difficult the decisions have been that we've had to make, and how hard all of our teachers and administrators and other staff in the district are working. And there seems to be a community understanding of that, and so I wanted you all to hear that piece. I also wanted to share that in the coming weeks, I will have the opportunity to be a part of two different EdWeek webinars that may involve as many as several thousand people on them, but I get to do that because of the work we've done with the Smart Labs and the work that we've done with the Success Foundation to get those Smart Labs into our schools. So this past week, we toured the Smart Lab and visited with students in the Smart Lab at Hyman Elementary School, and we were there with the president of the Success Foundation, Delia Hayfley, with Julie Hill, the executive director, and then several of the leaders from Well Trust were there to learn more about the Smart Labs and what the impact is on students. But I will tell you, and I'll put some of the pictures in EWeek for you all. It was so fun to watch the students working together. And so in one case, I had, there were two students working, and their hands were both on the project at the same time, doing different things with this electronic thing that they were working on. And it was just fun to see them working together and trying to solve problems and to create and imagine and collaborate. And so, you know, that has been a tremendous project. Just to remind you all, we purchase, when the Success Foundation raises enough money to purchase and implement one lab, we come back in with Mill levy override dollars, and we purchase another lab in the district. And so it's been a great partnership, and I'm just honored to get to represent the district and talk about project-based learning and what we're doing in our schools because of those creative learning systems, Smart Labs. So thank you for your continued support of that. We'll make sure that when you get out to a school visit, you get to see, when you get into an elementary or middle school with a Smart Lab, that you get to see it in action like I got to last week. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Before we go any further, we need to approve an agenda for tonight, and so if someone would be so kind as to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of our consent agenda, and so this is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is our Greeley Education Association Starfish Award, and so I'd like to invite Ms. Andy Lee to join us at the podium to present this award.
Hello, everyone. I am apologizing in advance. I don't actually have a starfish because my starfish was home with sick kiddos, but they're getting healthier, and she's where she needs to be. But instead of just saying, "I'm not going to take this slot," I want to take just a momentary opportunity of sharing just some awesome things that I was able to see. Looking back at the audience, seeing all those principals, I've had the privilege of being in most of their buildings, but the one that just thrilled me the other day was I was at Maplewood, and I always wondered, you know, you hear about reading programs and reading curriculum and all this resources that we're putting in, and does it really matter? Well, as I was putting together math curriculum centers, I can tell you it does. First of all, these students were reading in a copy room, and they were totally focused. And so I got to hear a third grader listen to read about microphalangi, virulent, and bacterium, and actually could explain to me what those things were. So I realized that we have a little third grader who's reading almost on a college level. Yes, it's scaffolded, but wow, what an opportunity. I got to hear next, a new language learner read the lyrics to a Marty Robinson song about a Mustang, because, you know, that's her mascot. And then not only did she read it, she told me a little bit about it, and then she sang it to me. Awesome. And then the third little girl loved monsters, and she spread me an entire book about monsters, and she was so excited that she asked if she could borrow that book to go read it to her teacher. And so as we're in the midst of COVID and we're wondering, is what we're doing making a difference? It is making a difference, and what a joy it was to watch those three little ones read, even if I was just sitting there cutting out math centers. But, you know, I need to be cautious about saying that, because cutting out those math centers meant that we had an educated teacher who could be in front of their students and not have to cut out those math centers. So any volunteering that people can do, any help that people can give, that's what we need. We need the support and the resources. So I want to say thank you. Thank you for giving us the support and the resources, and thank you for helping us create a situation where we can attract and retain quality personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next on our agenda is a proclamation, because it's National Principals Month, and to move forward, we will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 adopts the resolution declaring October as National Principals Month as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Tally, will you read the proclamation for us?
Yes. Proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6, National Principals Month, October 2021. Whereas, school leaders are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relation experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with our young people, our most valuable resources. And whereas, principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives. And whereas, the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. And whereas, leadership is second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors that contribute to what students learn at school, according to research conducted by the Wallace Foundation. And whereas, the celebration of National Principals Month honors elementary, K-8, middle level, and high school principals and recognizes the importance of school leadership in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 does hereby declare October 2021 as National Principals Month, given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District 6 this 27th day of September 2021, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Great job, as always. Dr. Pilch, before we go any further, is there anything you would like to say?
Well, you know there is, President Matthews. We're talking about our principals. You know, I'm just so pleased to have some of our principals with us here tonight. I think we'd have even more here, but it's parent-teacher conferences. So many of them are running conferences back at their buildings this evening. But, you know, what is not in all those whereas statements is what these leaders and their teams have had to do over the last 18 months during a pandemic, and all that they have done to keep students and staff and families safe and provide a quality education for our students every single day. And I, you know, I'm just so proud of the leaders we have here. It is because of them we were able to open school last year and stay open for most of the year, and it is because of them we were able to offer the robust summer programming we did, and it is because of them that we are still seeing our students grow and achieve. And, you know, I've said this before, but I have to say it again. I did not have the appreciation for how important the building principalship was in terms of the vision and tone and mission of that building until I began supervising principals, and then I really understood it. It is all about leadership, and it is so important that we have quality leaders, the very leaders you see sitting in the room here today, leading all of our schools. So thank you to each of you. I think you're truly remarkable and amazing, and we're so fortunate that we, the eight of us, get to serve you all and your teams back at your buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Solis?
So this is the last time I get to vote on this as a school board member, so I'm going to soak up all my moments. But principals, wow. But principals, wow. I mean, what I have learned of your job and what is on your plate every single day, all the fires you're putting out every single second, is just amazing. And the responsibility, the passion, and the care that you give our students is off the charts. We are so lucky in District 6 to have you a part of our district, running our schools, being there for our kids, helping parents. The list goes on and on. So as a school board member, please know that we recognize, we see you, we hear you, we appreciate you, and we honor you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Mr. Hayfley?
I can't agree more with Dr. Pilch and Mrs. Solis. You know, one of the things that makes me feel the best is the cultures that you establish within your buildings. And great leaders accomplish that through their ability to work in a positive manner, make challenging decisions, and step out and lead when nobody else wants to. And your staffs all follow, and we're very, very thankful for all the things that you do, not only academically but as leaders. But for me, the culture's was changed in the last eight years, and I would like to thank each of you who are here tonight and everybody else who isn't.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. Ms. Pappas?
I totally agree with everyone that has spoken so far. I know all of you very well and have worked with you for many, many years, and I just continue to be impressed that you are here tonight smiling, knowing that every day you are working so hard. And as Dr. Pilch said, just the fact that you led our district through a very challenging and difficult year last year, and here you are this year smiling and being the true leaders that you are. I am honored to know you, and I'm honored to sit here with you tonight. And those of you that are watching and with your students with parent-teacher conferences, absolutely, I feel the same way about all of you. So thank you all very, very much.
I would just echo those comments. I got to sit between two retired principals at a football game recently, and they kept looking for, I mean, they were just on high alert the entire time, watching kids. And one couldn't help but keep telling me about the, I think it's the running back, it was one of his kids, and how such an incredible person that he was. It just reminded me that yours is a job that doesn't turn off, right? It doesn't stop at 5 o'clock. It probably doesn't even stop when you retire. And we have two retired principals sitting up here with us tonight, Dr. Pilch and Ms. Pappas. And so it is such an important job. It doesn't get enough recognition, and I'm so thankful that we are recognizing you this month and this board meeting. And thank you for all the work that you do each and every day to make this district the place that it is. So with that, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next, we have another proclamation, and it's a proclamation to honor UNC and declare this UNC Week in District 6, and this is a proclamation that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 adopts the proclamation declaring October 4th through October 8th, 2021, as UNC Week in District 6.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there... Sorry, before we go any further, well, Mr. Hayfley, read the proclamation for us.
Whereas the University of Northern Colorado, UNC has been located in the heart of Greeley since the university's founding in 1889. And whereas UNC is among the top public universities in the United States and is particularly renowned for its College of Education and Behavioral Sciences, which produces some of the best teachers, principals, and administrators in the nation. And whereas many hundreds of UNC graduates have gone to work in District 6 schools and offices even to this day. And whereas UNC's annual Homecoming Week for 2021 begins on Monday, October 4th, and runs through Sunday, October 10th, 2021. And whereas it is appropriate that our school district help, recognize, celebrate, and support opportunities for quality higher education for our students and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of All County School District 6 declares October 4th through October 8th, 2021, be recognized as UNC Week in District 6, and that district staff and students be encouraged to wear UNC apparel that week and to proudly display bear flags, pennants, and banners at their homes, schools, and offices during Homecoming Week. Given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District 6 this 27th day of September 2021, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. And great job. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, President Matthews. I would like to introduce Mr. Darren Dunn, who is the Athletic Director at University of Northern Colorado, who is here tonight representing the Bears and representing acceptance of this proclamation. There is one job that is as hard as the high school principal, if not harder. And that is the building athletic director. So I can only imagine how difficult your job must be, Mr. Dunn. So once we take a vote, we will be happy to give you a few minutes at the podium if you'd like to share anything with us. But, you know, I will just tell you, as superintendent, and I'm just so appreciative of the partnership and relationship we have with UNC. When Kay Norton was there as president, she welcomed me into the district, served as a mentor to me. And since Andy Feinstein has arrived, we have become great friends and continue to partner. And I'm just so excited about what we will continue to do with our partnership between District 6 and then University of Northern Colorado. So thanks for being here tonight.
Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mueller?
Well, of course, I'm horribly, horribly biased. Go Bears! But I do want to say how much I appreciate the partnership as well. You know, the university continues to really put out the best of the best of teaching candidates, and our students go and work in District 6 schools. They get their teacher training, their student teaching, and I really appreciate that opportunity for our students. Our students are passionate about education and about students, and I just think that it is a very symbiotic relationship. And those students then graduate UNC and move into Greeley-Evan's and continue to work in the district and continue to contribute to the community. And many of them came from District 6 schools. So we have a very high local student population, and I'm just really thrilled to have that continuing relationship and hope that our community will continue to support the UNC Bears during Homecoming Week.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Mash?
I just also wanted to say that I'm proud to be a UNC alum in the nursing program, not education program, but lots and lots of... I was very well prepared by UNC to enter my nursing career. And then I also just feel like UNC brings so much to our community as a whole, just the opportunities that living in a college town affords, you know, concerts, theatrical events, sporting events, all kinds of things that just really add to the richness of our community. So thank you for your partnership with the school district and just community enrichment as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Solis?
I just want to say thank you as a higher institute of education, really recognizing our community and the diversity that we have to offer, and also the families and students that you bring into our community that enrich it even more. And just your consciousness of wanting to make sure that everyone feels welcomed on that campus, and your continued work to move towards that direction. You've definitely been a leader in this community on that work, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Mr. Hayfley?
As a graduate and a former educator at UNC and a former coach at UNC, I too am Go Bears. And, you know, first of all, Dr. Pilch, I need to thank you. Our relationship wasn't always really positive with UNC, and because of your dynamic leadership and your ability to work in a positive manner with UNC, everything has become incredibly positive, and it doesn't matter what arena it's in. And it's because of you and Kay Norton and Andy Feinstein, and it's greatly appreciated. You all don't know it, but Mr. Dunn's three children are graduates of District 6, which is spectacular. And you haven't lived until you have gone... Normally, it's a women's basketball game, and all of our fifth graders are there, and they stay the entire game, and they scream the entire game, no matter who scores. There's this high-pitched squeal, and the line to the concession stand is longer than Nottingham Field. And so he understands about relationships in District 6. So it's great to be part of District 6 and UNC. So thanks very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. Mr. Tally?
Thank you so much. And hopefully I will be an alum of UNC pending a disretention. No promises. But UNC is a great, not only great with collaborating and partnering with District 6, but bridging that gap between District 6 and Ames and City of Greeley and really working as a collaborative team to provide a lot of different things for our students in the district. And I'm very grateful that we have such a great hometown university here in Greeley. I think that sometimes Coloradans lose sight of how intimate and welcoming UNC is, and they want to go to the big CUs and all that stuff. But really, this is where it's at, to be a Bear. So we love it here.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Pappas?
Okay, I just had to say, I too am an alum and a retired adjunct professor at UNC. I just had to say it, but thank you so much. But also, I just want to say, I live right across the street from the parking lot by Nottingham Field, and so I had the opportunity to walk my dog there for a year without any students. And it is so nice to have students back. And it's just, it's such a welcoming atmosphere, no matter what time of day, students are just friendly, and I appreciate that, just having the students back and the culture and climate, as Ms. Solis talked about. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
And I would just add that, well, another football story. I was at a football games Friday, Greeley West, Greeley Central game, and had to run out to the car, and who's walking in as I'm going out but Andy Feinstein? And then Mr. Hayfley and I were tailgating the next day at the UNC game, and everybody we saw was a District 6 teacher, or a District 6 student, or a District 6 parent. And it was just a reminder of how intertwined and how interdependent our institutions are. And we're so proud of UNC and how connected we are and the support that we get as a district from UNC. And so thank you for being here tonight, and we're so excited to honor this week as UNC's Homecoming Week. So Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
Do you want to see Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I do have a... I need to sign something, and then I'm going to present that now that we've officially approved this. It's an honor to be here in front of you. This is my first time. I get to see John all the time at events, but it's great to see all of you. And it's an honor to represent UNC. I know that we feel equally appreciative of the partnership. And I think in any good partnership, you work well together. And I really feel like we've been doing that, and I hope we can do that more. We have a lot of programs with Read with the Bears, and our middle school program at a women's basketball game are so fun. I hope that we can continue that and grow that partnership. We hope we can do more with District 6, for sure. But super appreciative of you honoring our Homecoming Week. It's going to be a big game next Saturday against Eastern Washington. I hope you all can be there, and just really appreciate the partnership, and thank you for having me. Thank you. Our next item of business are revisions to our A policies, foundations to basic commitments, policy, and regulation, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to the A foundations and basic commitments policy and regulations as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, anybody watching with any regularity knows that we are always updating policies, and some of those policies are simple grammatical change. A lot of them are then just state legislature passes new laws, and we have to update policies to reflect those. And this looks probably like we're going to have this one and a couple more, but these look like probably the latter, that the state legislatures made some changes to our laws, and we're updating policies. Is there anything else you want to add before we begin approval?
No, President Matthews, you're absolutely correct. These policies and the next are a result of federal and state law changes, both. So thank you.
Is there any comment or questions from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next policy are revisions to our G personnel policies. This is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to the G personnel policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments from board members on this one? Seeing none, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is revisions to policy JB equal educational opportunities, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to policy JB equal education opportunities as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is Innovation 2030 Update, District Accountability Committee Membership and School Accountability Membership Approval, and this is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the membership of the district and school accountability committees as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say about this one?
Just very briefly, but first I thought I would say that I know this is one more night out for our principals and for Mr. Dunn, and so if you all would like to exit, please feel free to do so, and we will not be offended. Dr. Dattery has made her way to the podium, and she oversees our district accountability committee and that work here in our district, and I'll let her take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. President Matthews and members of the school board, just a few quick comments about this action item tonight. As per state law, the following actions are required by you all, the school board, which are the approval of the membership of the district accountability committee, as well as the approval of the membership of the school accountability committees at all of our schools. And to provide you a little bit of background on these, the Colorado Department of Education publishes annually a district accountability handbook on its website, and it provides an outline of the requirements and the responsibilities for state, district, and school stakeholders in the state's accountability process that was established by the Education Accountability Act of 2009, which is Senate Bill 163. So the Board of Education is responsible for either appointing or creating a process for electing members of a district accountability committee. And the process in Greeley-Evan School District 6, as outlined in our bylaws, is to have a representative from each school serve on the district accountability committee, as well as a board member and a community member as well. We also have a member of GEA. And a complete list of the members of the district accountability committee can be found in your meeting materials and board docs, and that's for this coming school year. Based on state law reflected in the district accountability handbook. Based on state law reflected in the district accountability handbook, the Board of Education charges the District Six Accountability Committee with specific responsibilities during the school year. In summary, these responsibilities include submitting recommendations to the Board of Education regarding priorities for spending district dollars, preparation of our district unified improvement plan, and the review of any charter renewals or any new charter applications that may come. And that's just a few of the responsibilities that they have, but those are some pretty significant ones. Additionally, the DAC supports family engagement opportunities and other district-wide initiatives. A few years ago, and will continue this year, at each of our meetings, there is also a superintendent's forum whereby Dr. Pilch shares with our district accountability committee important information and provides an opportunity to solicit feedback or get some input from the district accountability committee about issues and concerns they may have or thoughts that they have that will help support and move our district forward. In addition to the district accountability committee membership approval from the board, each school is also responsible for establishing a school accountability committee. Please see the enclosed documents as well in your board docs for a membership list of each of those accountability committees. The duties and the responsibilities of a school accountability committee are very similar to that of the district accountability committee, but are at the local school level. And they provide input and feedback and direction for school leadership and for the principal. So I appreciate the opportunity to present to you these membership lists and just to provide you a little bit of additional feedback or information about this important, these important committees. So thank you. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Ms. Mueller.
So as a former member of the district accountability committee, I want to thank you always for getting together just a fine group of parents and community members. And thank you to Ms. Pappas for taking over for me due to scheduling conflicts. I do miss the DAC, so to tell everybody hi. It is a great opportunity to get to know more about how the district works and the improvement plans and to really have a say in the process. I did have one question on the school accountability committees. I see that there are several schools that just don't have a full committee. Are they still in process of collecting those folks?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mueller. They are continuing to recruit and get a full membership. And so they will be able to do that. It is by law that they do have to meet four times throughout the year, but they still have time to be able to do that, and they will get those submitted.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Well, Dr. Dattery, I would just say thank you, not just to you, but to all these DAC and SAC members. Dr. Pilch mentioned that it's another night out for our principals, and it is another night out for our principals, but it's also another night out for all of these people. I don't know that everybody appreciates that our district is run by different committees and different groups of people who actually do a lot of the decision-making. People think we make most of the decisions. And then the truth is, we simply approve the decisions that another group makes. And so please convey our gratitude to these SAC members and DAC members, our principals as well. Convey, convey our gratitude to your SAC members. It's such an important part of our district and such an important part of the accountability in our district. And so thank you, and thank them.
Thank you, will do.
Ms. Green.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is Innovation 2030 Update, Operational and Organizational Effectiveness Goal to Hiring and Retention. And so, Dr. Pilch, this one is yours, I believe.
Thank you, President Matthews. And I see that Mrs. Overton, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, is making her way to the podium to provide you with this report. You did receive additional information in your weekly memo this past week. And what Ms. Overton will do tonight is give you the highlights of that report. Thank you.
Good evening. It's good to be here and to talk again about this focus area for us. And I just am grateful that we've been working on this all year. I'm ready to give you some information. And thank you for any questions that you might have at the end. So you know that our district focus area has, it supports the mission and vision that we have in the district. This District Six engages in every student in personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready. Additionally, that vision says that we engage, empower, and inspire today students in partnership. Thank you, I forgot to set it up. All right. In partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. The three values that we use in this area that really drive our work are the, we believe in diversity as a strength, we commit to hiring and retaining quality staff, and we commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. Of course, that fourth goal area that's here in the bottom corner, operational and organizational effectiveness, is that District Six ensures innovation, transparency, and accountability to our community through measurable outcomes and continuous improvement. Priority three maximizes the recruitment, hiring, and retention of all employees in the district. That's the one that takes us directly to what we're going to talk about tonight. So the outcomes that we have for this area that's taking us into Innovation 2030 are the four that are listed here. And we will be achieving these in the next few years as we implement this new strategic plan. To this point, all of them are in progress. Without reading them, you can see we remain focused on interviewing and targeting candidates of color that mirror the community and increasing the candidate pool. Finally, we want to increase the retention rate each year. Let's spend a little bit of time talking about retention and the planning and progress that we've been going through. So here are some key actions the district has led to meet our measures and objectives for operational and organizational effective focus area. Maintaining our exit and stay interviews for our hard-to-fill positions, those are the bus drivers and special service providers, math and CLD teachers, special education paras, and then APT positions. We use data from our focus groups to develop training plans, hold retention discussions with each principal as we monitor staffing plans and employee progress through our spring meetings. And we celebrated the launch of some of our employee recognition planning, as well as the Employee Resource Group for People of Color. We learned in our exit interviews that employees leave District Six for about the same reason that they leave other organizations. This year was most challenging with COVID stressors and health-related issues. Other reasons include higher salary, care for a family member, supervisor issues, or lack of collaboration, scheduling, or unclear job expectations. Those were answers that were given to us. Our actions include a focused review on job descriptions by the employee and supervisors themselves to truly understand what a job expectation is this year. By updating job descriptions, we understand what training is needed, as well as how to complete a compensation study and review for specific positions. Our exit surveys are sent to every employee within 30 days of their departure. They have the right to, if they look on their email and they actually want to take the survey, they can do that. It's not something that we can require. We had 50 surveys returned, and we continue to ask employees to give us feedback. Some of the data we collected about how we could get employees back to District Six include continue to increase pay and benefits, offer remote work opportunities, offer better support systems, and improve building culture, build better career advancement opportunities. Last year, I told you about the two groups who leave the district in the highest numbers, the millennials and the people who have worked with us for less than one year. This year, employees are choosing to stay longer. The percentage of employees leaving after one year is down by 4%. That's good news. We still need to understand our millennials. HR will continue to focus, target focus groups to better understand why people choose to leave District Six, as well as discuss strategies with cabinet members and also with supervisors. Building a thriving workplace requires focus on the employee. Employees share with us that supervisor relationships are the number one and most important, as well as opportunities to grow professionally. Gallup research says that people that must have opportunities to connect with others in a positive and meaningful culture, which also offers employees autonomy and flexibility. Employees who participate gave us areas to improve. And areas that they talked to us about was help us prepare, be prepared, and front-load training and expectations. They're very excited to start working with District Six when they get hired. They're eager to be part of their team, but once they start, they may end up feeling a little disconnected. And they, some of them, some teachers were given the hardest students to teach. So we heard that, and we wanted to address that with our principals. They experience pressure by us, by the nation, by the profession in general about high-performance testing. And some employees leave because they find it difficult to work with some student populations. We use this data to help principals and supervisors understand what's most important to millennials. By building strategies around building relationships and giving employees more autonomy, they will increase their employee retention rate and ultimately increase student achievement. We did talk, the good news is, is that we did talk with some people about why they would stay or why they would want to be here in the focus group. Why did they stay? And what would they miss the most? And they said they would miss the students. So we have clear people who are working with us that really want to work with our students and are here for kids. They're here because of their administrative team. They're here because of the team that they work on. Our classified focus groups shared about the same information as the certified group. These employees would like to see more recognition. They'd like to see more communication, and they want more engagement by their supervisors. HR Directors Robert Hepperally and Christina Crane will both be training operational managers this year to build relationships, how to effectively target, hire, and train staff, as well as support employees' growth and opportunity. While the schools may not be the same on this retention trend slide, it's important to note that schools are striving to reach a 90% mark. And if you remember at the earlier slide that talked about all the different, the high-end groups, and then also in the report that I gave you, we talked about schools that have above 90%. They're all striving to reach that 90%. Some schools may have just missed the mark by one employee. Note that Chapala has been here on the top five for the past two years and consistently increases their retention rate each year. This is the first year that we have published the sites that are getting success in hiring to mirror their community of color, people of color by site. These directors and principals develop workplace culture, as well as invest in each, in and build relationships with their employees. We continue to see data, celebrate the data where we can. As we begin to share this information out with departments and employee groups, we will begin to ask the question about why people of color stay here. Yet another opportunity for our focus group. So last year's data of 83.31% was over the state average of 80.93%. We have typically checked data from the most recent hiring season against the state numbers released in June. However, the state numbers released in June correspond to the previous year's data. So when I say to you, the number that is reflected 83%, we were over by about 3% from the state average last year. That's exciting news. This number this year is 89% of retention. But the corresponding state retention number will not be released until June 2022. So we can't make that comparison just yet on this 89. Now, last, but certainly not least, this 2021 hiring season reflects an 89.43 retention rate. It's interesting to see what the state retention rate will be. It's unusually high this year for retention, but given the COVID year and the salary increases from July, we have many employees who are staying in District Six. This chart is a new chart that we're tracking to show how, what our CDE retention rate is in the state and how we connect with it. So you can see how we've been going up over the last few years. One of the I-2030 outcomes is to report that employee groups report over 85% retention rate by the year 2030. The baseline for our departments and sites was established this year. Note that the interim measure that's on the side reports 80% retention rate at each site and department. So by looking at those site and department numbers, that will feed into our outcome data of district-wide for all licensed and classified employees. Okay, so it looks a little different, site versus, site and department versus licensed and classified. This chart shows that both classified and certified retention numbers over four years have increased to 75%. Although they are not the same sites, the percentage of sites meeting the interim measure is the same. In 2017, when we started the District Six retention work in the Strategic Plan Innovation 2020, 25% of school sites had a classified retention rate of over 80%. That same year, just 57% of school sites met the 80% measure for certified staff. We will continue to work with sites to understand their retention numbers and to understand what strategies they're using that work. So the next part I want to talk about is the hiring part. Here are key actions for the year. We began the work of understanding interviewing bias and how to focus energy on hiring talent. Planning the operational manager's leadership practices is in process, but implementing was put on hold during the COVID year. Although we have achieved the design phase of the hiring process, we still have work to do at getting the entire system to utilize this new systematic online interviewing process. All operational and school sites will be using the applicant scheduler for all postings and interviews coming in 2021, 2022. At this point, we have 66% of our sites utilizing this new process. This is brand-new part of Innovation 2030. And this process satisfaction survey will be designed and piloted this year. This data, progress data that you're looking at here, is for Title I sites only. We are making progress to build a staff that mirrors our community. And this data reflects the work of title schools for this last year. Another piece of data that was analyzed this year was percentages of students of color compared to staff of color. A report done by the Learning Policy Institute revealed that when taught by teachers of color, students of color have better academic performance, improved graduation rates, and are more likely to attend college. While some sites and classifications reflect higher percentages of people of color than others, there's still work to be done to close those gaps. This data shows the interviewing trends of our five elementary sites that are using the applicant interview scheduler. While there's still room for improvement, sites can use this information to determine the depth of their pools, to target recruiting efforts, and to work with HR to hire the best candidates. This enables the hiring manager to work quickly, interview, offer, and staff positions early, and remain competitive. And then this new in-progress goal, it says that annually we will increase, I'm sorry, not goal, measure, annually increase employees who are people of color. And this year, our APT hires, we had 24% were people of color. The next part is to talk about, the last part is the recruiting part of our talent objective. This past year has challenged us to find top talent while working and recruiting remotely. Our human resources directors and hiring supervisors spent hours on the screening interviews. directors and hiring supervisors spent hours on the screening interviews and sitting in waiting rooms on Zoom or in handshake for candidates. Social media data is improving every month, and we expanded to national searches more this year than ever. Pipelines are being developed at a younger age across the system. Compensation was reviewed and revised, if necessary, for all positions across the district. Highlighting classified fairs, in this, if you look at this data, you'll see that when we highlight the classified fairs, transportation is out and about in the city. Nearly every weekend, if you're driving around in Greeley or Evans, chances are you'll pass a school bus and the transportation employees who greet our community and celebrate the work they do to transport students every day. Over the year, human resources and other departments post on Facebook. This year, we posted 73 times with a breakdown listed on the top chart. The data in the second chart demonstrates how many people were reached, the times someone liked the post, and how many people shared the information on their own page. Finally, 1,627 people clicked on the link to check out the position, the department, or the posting. Human resources will begin to pull this data around the overall candidate pool in the fall. We'll start targeting actions that will help us build a pool and will help us in the recruiting process. The HR directors will target this work and work with operational directors, university partners, and principals to determine next steps. This year, we hired nearly three times as many APT employees compared to last year. While we were above the initial goal of interviewing and hiring 20% of our interviews, that fell slightly from last year, we will continue to push to hire the best and recruit and interview people of color so that we will mirror our community. Launching I-2030 will deepen our work for retention, hiring, and recruiting, and here are key steps for talent through next year and beyond. Thank you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. I bet you will have a few questions.
Ms. Bass?
Thank you for this report. It's very informative, and I appreciate the work that you're doing to keep us informed with the practices. I do have one question. I don't remember what slide it was, but you showed a slide that had the increase in retention, specifically what you had classified and certified, but the 2017 to 2020, there was a significant increase in the retention for classified employees. Do you have an explanation? Or I'm just wondering why that significant increase?
Well, it's a good question. We have had lots of conversations. First of all, Dr. Pilch really wanted us to think about what kind of voice does HR have, or do classified members of our employee group, do they have a voice in HR? And so we changed HR to reflect a director of classified, so they have somebody that they can talk to, that they can brainstorm with, they can get some ideas from. And so that started back in 16. So I think that was one of the things that's helped a little bit. And then we've got people that really do focus on their classified staff. We've been having conversations about how we can be an employee-friendly group, and to make sure that they feel really comfortable, that they've got opportunities for growth, for opportunities to get in new positions, and they're engaging in an evaluation process that's dialogue, rather than, here's your evaluation, sign off on it this year. It's dialogue, and they have goals that they set. We also have opportunities for them to meet with their new supervisor right away when they first start, within 90 days. So that gives them the opportunity to know if they're on the right track, if they're doing the right things. We have set up, although we still have a lot of work to do in this area, but we've set up some places where there are mentor programs. And we did not do that. We just have observed, for example, like in finance, where there are mentors for the office managers, that's really helped consistently meet that retention for office managers or classified. Dr. Pilch, do you want to add something?
Well, I mean, so what Annette's talked about is the whole kind of interpersonal side, the way you treat employees, the climate of working here in the system, which is a big piece of this. But you also have to pay people. And in 2017, we passed a MLEV override. And as a result of that MLEV override, almost annually, our employees, who are hourly employees, primarily classified employees, have received a raise every year.
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Pilch.
Our goal was to get them into the market and keep them in the market, because if our employees are not in the market, they're going to leave us and go to UNC, or go to the county, or go to Banner to go to work, where they can be paid in a market wage. And so that has been an important piece in our MLEV override, and without a doubt, has had to have had an impact. But you've got to have the culture, too. I mean, it's culture, and it's paying people, you know, a good living wage for the work that they're doing, that they would be paid in the market.
Well, I appreciate both of those. And I do appreciate the climate, because having supervised classified employees, sometimes you don't take care and have the awareness to make sure that you are taking care of all of your employees. So I appreciate the intentionality behind that. And with the MLO, we did make a very targeted effort to do that market analysis for our classified employees, and so glad that that made a difference. Thank you both.
Thank you for the question.
Other questions from board members? That was a lot of information.
It was a lot of work.
A lot of work. Thank you for that. I do have just one about millennials and the number of millennials leaving. Do we think that they're leaving simply District Six? Or do we feel like, and it seems like it was tied to certified staff, are people leaving the profession? Are millennials leaving teaching? Do we have a sense?
I think what I have understood is that millennials are looking at jobs across the nation differently. It's not just District Six, and it's not just teaching. I mean, there's some, clearly, there are some, I think we mirror what's happening across the country, that when we hire people, that they are looking for things that they value and things that they're looking for a really good fit. And we're trying to understand by conducting these focus groups, what is it that they value, and what is it that they want in an organization, and how do we meet them and do that so that they will stay with us longer? So I'm not surprised to see that, although it's disheartening, but I'm not surprised because it's happening across the country. Dr. Pilch, would you like to add something?
Well, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with Gallup some on this data, and that's where Annette is pulling the information from, is from that Gallup work. And they've looked at professionals who are millennials throughout the country, and, you know, the data says they make their mind up within the first 90 days if they're going to stay in an organization. So they may stay for another year, but they know in the first 90 days if that's a place they're going to stay for a long period of time. So what that's meant for us is that we've got to really take care of people on the front end.
On the front end.
And HR has worked really hard to have a system from the time that employee applies, that potential employee applies, all the way through the offering, you know, the hiring package, and then to their first day, that they have to have several touchpoints along the way, where they keep those employees with them so that they're getting a positive experience and wanting to stay as a part of our organization.
Seven touchpoints. And we also include the schools in that, too. When we say to principals, make sure that you've reached out to them, give them a T-shirt, give them something that is connecting with that building. Make sure that their department has had a chance to reach out, and go out and have coffee, or go have tea, or anything else, dinner. Really make a connection with them. So not only is it that we're doing it in HR, but we're also asking the hiring managers and the principals or hiring authority to do this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Orveton. Ms. Elise?
Thank you for doing this work. I know it's a lot, especially when you go from generation to generation and just those different value systems. I really do see, though, sometime in the future where neuroscience really starts to play a factor on who we hire, how we hire, how we retain them, and it really boils it down to what's really important to them, and how they learn, how they retain, and what they hold, you know, as far as, you know, their top list of things. And so I really see that as larger corporations are branching into that. That's definitely something we're probably going to have to look forward to, which will be interesting, I think.
We might have to hire a neuroscientist.
There you go. There you go. But thanks again. That's a lot of work. I appreciate your commitment to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? All right, well, I'll echo Ms. Elise's. Thank yous, and again, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Our final agenda item is our public participation regarding non-agenda items. And this is the section of our board meeting where, if you have will to speak to us about something that is not on our agenda tonight, you are welcome to do so. And I think we have one person signed up tonight, and that's Ms. Jamie Weaver, or Weber. As Ms. Weber comes to the podium, I'll just read this briefly, as I do every board meeting. The board welcomes comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the board on items relating to Greeley-Evans School District Six. People wishing to address the board are asked to complete a public participation form by 12:00 PM on the day of this scheduled meeting. Speakers will be heard in the order they are signed up to speak. Written testimony or speaker handouts may be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and expect speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. With that, Ms. Weber? Ms. Weaver, I'm sorry if I'm...
It's Weber.
Weber, okay, got it. You'll have two minutes.
I'm actually here to speak about two items from the last meeting. Number one, a teacher who presented an award is a perfect representation of why masking is not a good idea. I'm sorry to keep bringing this up, but the facts are the facts. I'm not trying to come down on a teacher personally. I'm just using it as an example. The teacher adjusted her mask over 15 times in three minutes, an average of five times per minute, once every 10 seconds. I couldn't hear her presentation because of both the mask and her routinely touching her face renders her PPE completely useless. If this is what's going on in the schools, then these masks aren't working. I'm wearing a mask today that said on the packaging, "Not for medical use, not FDA-approved." So the fact that the board keeps pushing these masks on the students, and now for people who want to come and speak to the board, speaks volumes. It's not sanitary. That's why there's so much pushback on masking. It was disgusting and distracting and a perfect picture of what an environment our kids are learning in. And just a side note, the lack of efficacy of masks has been proven time and time again, yet this board forces their own personal beliefs on everyone else. Number two, last meeting, a Northridge High School student described an incident about being bullied and harassed about his personal medical decisions. I read on the district website today, the board recognizes that bullying behavior can have a negative effect on the school climate and can lead to more serious behaviors affecting the health, safety, and welfare of students. The board supports a secure school climate, conductive to teaching that is learning, and learning that is free from threat, harassment, or any type of bullying behavior. The purpose of this policy is to promote consistency of approach and to help create a climate in which all types of bullying are regarded unacceptable. How is the board handling students and faculty that are being bullied and harassed by their peers for personal medical decisions? I hear a lot about protocol, but what is that protocol?
Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Not answering?
We don't respond to public comment, but someone may follow up with you from our administration.
Thank you.
That is all that we have tonight. Just a reminder, we will be in a couple of other schools. I saw our central principal here tonight, so we'll be at Central in a few weeks, also be at Brentwood, I believe, in a few weeks. And we do have one more bean-topping ceremony in our near future at the Twinton Pre-Engineering Academy. And so we're excited about those events and everything that's coming up for us. This meeting is adjourned.